One focus, we in order, salute our flag please. Flag be lifted. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Vote, vote please. Mr. Vogt here, Mr. Eskim here, Mr. Jean Aquius, Mrs. Miller, Mr. Kendra, Mr. Canacy, Mr. Cecil Berg, Mr. Chapman.
Enthusiastically present.
Mr. Castillo.
Present.
In accordance to the terms of the sunshine law adequate notice of this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, borough clerk's office, public library, three newspapers, and tap into on January seventh, twenty twenty-five. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices pursuant to district policy number zero one six seven. Each statement made by participants shall be limited to three minutes duration and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Thank you, Mr. Penney. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Tonight we have a double presentation. We have students presenting from South Plainfield High School and South Plainfield Middle School. We like to take time at our board meetings to highlight some of the amazing happenings in our school. So I'm going to ask Mr. Foscolo come on up to podium and introduce your students and the teacher who will be guiding this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Tansey, and I want to say thank you to the entire Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to present one of the great things that happens annually here at the high school as the high school and kind of like the flagship is all you pick up, but those accomplishments of the principal. But we like to do as much outreach to the schools as possible. Read Across America Day is a huge day for our senior class. So I had Mrs. Perici, our media specialist at the high school, who spearheads that entire program with some of our seniors and they'll be presenting to you what they'll be doing at the elementary schools this year. So, Mrs. Perici.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us today. Over twenty years ago, current high school English teacher Bonnie Di Mary created the Read Across America Day event. High school seniors prepare for the day by practicing, reading their children's books, and creating exciting crafts to do with the students at all elementary schools. Tuesday, March fourth, will be a special day for our school community as our seniors will create a memorable experience for themselves and the elementary students they visit. As the coordinator of this event, none of this would be possible without the support of the SPHS English teachers, the elementary school teachers, and the administration at all schools. We have three groups of seniors here today to show you the books they will be reading and the crafts they will be doing with their elementary students.
Hi, my name is Isabel Aladi and my other group members are Ariel Catalonati and Isabelle Smeri Macchia. We will be going to a third grade classroom at Kennedy Elementary School on Read Across America Day. We will be reading the book, The True Story of the Three Little Pigs, to the students. Our students will be making origami wolves, which are here, and we will be adding personalized accessories to them so the kids can choose whatever they want to accessorize it. For example, I have like a bow and a baseball bat on here, and also I drew out some instructions for them. And the main reason why I wanted to do an origami wolf for them is because on the outside it's like a big scary wolf, and on the inside I wanted them to write something unique about them to kind of show that it's important to not judge it by its cover, which is kind of the whole point of this story. So yeah, that's pretty much my project.
Hi, our names are Julio, Amari, and Mary DeMans and we're going to be doing, um, we are going to be reading to the fourth graders at the elementary school for the Read Across America Day. We'll be reading them the Samantha Sorensen book. And we will be making a Jurassic biome and the Oregon volcano. But the reason why we got to make this was because for our fourth graders, it is, I thought of the way that it would be a little harder to entertain them unless it's something that would if them, um, if them want to, um, yeah, be more engaged with the project. And we thought it would be something fun for them to have like a volcano and something like that. Our book is about a dinosaur that's one of a kind, and in a way we decided to incorporate that into our project by making them have their own little biomes that's also one of a kind. And they will be painting their own volcanoes and they will also be making it explode. And I thought it would be something very creative for them. So yeah, thank you.
Hi, our names are Julie and Andos.
And.
And we will be going to the very great classroom at Rosamond Elementary School on Read Across America Day. And this is our project. It's basically the orbit, it's called the Orbit Explorer, and it will be based off of our book, The Magic School Bus, also in the solar system. Um, it shows us on the ground since it's a bit more intricate for students, but it's also engaging and it's something cute for them to take home and remember. Um, our book mainly goes about just exploring outer space, just having fun with their friends, and getting to spend time with your school, and enjoying times with the teachers. So I figured that this would be something cute. Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Education, for allowing us to show you what we're doing throughout the schools for Read Across America Day, and thanks again to Mrs. Perici and our outstanding seniors for coming and presenting over tonight. So thank you for your time.
Do you mind seeing the project? Would they mind?
Yeah. Come on, show off, come on. Do we want to make the volcano?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm excited.
Right up close there.
Sure, my eyebrows.
You know, I do this one hit you sick, right? Yeah. When the garbage is supposed to get some blood.
Let's stand back so everybody can see.
Does each student make?
Yes.
That's cool how you made.
Very nice.
That's great. Oh, look at who this is. You, so everybody has kind of.
And it's ready to go yet?
We used to do that.
Remember those?
Yeah.
You drew that?
Yeah.
Nice. Yeah. What did you make of it?
Oh, curtains.
Great job. Did you have to catch up? And I like the idea.
We looked for a lot of ideas. Um, Miss Di Mary is really knowledgeable, she does. And so they're gonna love it. We started by just kind of come up with like some creative stuff.
That's awesome.
We have different cutouts, so Sarah just seems to have like a fluff on it or like a missprizzle. So like we printed everything out and we made out little templates. Good on them.
Cool, great job.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mrs. Murray, will you join us at podium? Mrs. Murray will be presenting a number of her eighth grade students to read some poems and show us some art for Black History Month. Thank you so much for having us. To my right.
Hello. To my right, I have our incredibly talented eighth grade students from our visual arts program. Ms. Bednar couldn't make it tonight, but I do want to definitely make a shout out to her because this is her project. This is a project that she's created to celebrate Black History Month. She has students read poetry from African-American artists. We have Langston Hughes, Maya Angelou, and James Baldwin poems. And then they created artwork from those poems. So what they visualize from, you know, the literary arts into the visual arts. So we're so impressed by their talent. Mr. Castillo created slideshows for us, so we have all of their artwork actually digitally up here, so we didn't have to bring any paper with us. And our students are going to read the poems, and you guys can see the artwork as we go through and as they read. So I have, what, eight students here, seven students here. I have Caitlin Singleton and Candace Newcom. They're going to be reading Dreams and Mother to Son with David Yadov. I have Shawnee Perkins reading Human Family by Maya Angelou and Paradise with Isabella and Igburra, Peyton Gerard, and Alessandro Zapata.
Do you want to line up here in the order that you're starting up?
Dreams by Langston Hughes. Hold fast to dreams, for dreams die. Life is a broken winged bird that cannot fly. Hold fast to dreams, for when dreams go, life is a barren field frozen with snow. Mother to Son by Langston. Well, son, I tell you, life for me ain't been no clear crystal stair. It had its tacks in it, and splinters, and boards torn up, and places with no carpet floor there. But all the time I've been a climbing on, and reaching lands, and turning corners, and sometimes going in the dark where there ain't no rain.
So boy, don't you turn back. Don't you sit down on the steps, 'cause you'll find it's kinder heart. Don't you fall now, for I still go and climb. I still climb it, and life for me ain't no crystal stair.
Human Family by Maya Angelou. I know the differences in the human family. Some of us are serious, some thrive on comedy. Some declare their lives are lived as true for fun to be. The others claim they really live the real reality. The variety of our skin tones can confuse the muse delight, brown and pink and beige and purple, tan and blue and white. I've sailed upon the seven seas and stopped in every land. I've seen the wonders of the world, not yet one common man. I know ten thousand of the women called Jane and Mary Jane, but I've never not seen any two who really were the same. Mirror twins are different, although they're featured jobs, and lovers think quite different thoughts while lying side by side. We love and lose in China, we leap on inland moors, and laugh in moning genie, and dive on Spanish shores. We speak success in Finland, are born and die in Maine. In minor ways we differ, and major we're the same. I know the obvious differences between store and type, but we are more alike, my friends, than we are unalike.
Let this be my summertime of autumn sky and rolling sea, and smiling clouds and winter blaster, and jest myself in tryst with thee, and children playing in the glory of carefree and youthful day. And sunshine shining from the heavens, and tears and sighs flood away. Let this be my happiness, with the earth's swiffling wound. Let this be my only solace. Just to know you love me so, just to know that we're both winning. Far up from this earthly climb, hand in hand through lacking meadows. Let this be my summertime.
That's our presentation, but they are ready for questions or anything that you want to find out about that artwork.
Did each one of you who read, did you also draw or paint or create the image?
Yes, I did.
That's phenomenal. You guys are great. Really, really good. I'm impressed. I said, Mr. Hendrick, you know, pictures are up there, you see how great they are. So congratulations to you guys. You did a great job with the artwork, and you did a better job of getting up to the podium there and reading your poems. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Tansey. We have Mr. Joseph from Something Moving here to present our annual report for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
My name is Joseph Stow, and I am an artist manager with Something Moving Company. We've completed your district's fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit and issued two reports. First, we reported the auditor management report and outlined different areas of compliance that we all had. These areas include payroll, the records of the board secretary, treasurer, federal state grants, purchase them, food service, and the student activities fund. Any audit recommendations as a result of our testimony would be included in this report. Your district has no recommendations for this year's audit. The second report issued is the annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFR. This includes the district's financial statements and our opinion on those statements. The district received an unmodified opinion, which means that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. One of the most informative schedules in the ACFR is exhibit C one, which starts on page eighty-nine of the report. The results of operations of the general fund are reflected here along with variances between actual and final budgeted revenues and expenditures reported. Other informative schedules in the ACFR include exhibit J four on page one thirty-nine and exhibit J seventeen on page one fifty-two. The J four shows a comparison of governmental fund revenues and expenditures over a ten-year period, while the J seventeen shows ten-year comparison of enrollment, operating expenditures, and a relative cost per pupil. One area of the report that the board may find interesting is in the matter of transmittal prepared by the district superintendent, which begins on page one of the ACFR report. The district reported that the high school graduating class of twenty twenty-four witnessed diverse post-graduation paths, with fifty-five percent attending four-year colleges, twenty-seven percent pursuing two-year institutions, and eighteen percent entering trade schools, union apprenticeships, or the workforce. I would like to thank the board for the opportunity given to our firm in allowing us to perform the audit of the district, as well as the cooperation and assistance provided by the district's personnel during our audit engagements. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We now have a presentation by Catherine Pfeifer. Catherine Pfeifer, welcome back again. For those of you that don't know Catherine, this is her second time here this year, and is this your fourth time?
I think so.
Okay, a fourth time presenting to the board between last year and this year. If you don't know Catherine already, she is the student council executive board president after serving as junior class president last year. She's very active in clubs, sports, and activities in the high school, and she is a member of the field hockey team, the track team, the competitive cheer team, and still finds time to be a member of Passion Week. Welcome back, Catherine.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here again for what I think is my last speech at Board of Education meetings. I'm Catherine Pfeifer, and I'm the executive board president here at SPHS. I'm currently in season for competition cheer. We've had a very successful season so far. This weekend is our state championship at Brookfield Community College, and next weekend we have a national competition in Wildwood. Recently, my teammate Taylor Evans and I auditioned and were selected for this year's All-State first team. Moving on for me, SPHS had just finished the seal of bi-literacy testing. Club photos were just finished. Students and parents, please check emails for Mr. Foscolo through your book updates and ordering information. The eighth grade orientation took place for incoming ninth graders. This month, all students will be scheduling for next year with their guidance counselors during their social studies classes. The winter pep rally will take place during the first week of March. Seniors are preparing for Read Across America on March fourth. My group is going to be reading The Good Egg to our students and have two crafts planned for them to make. On March sixth, the all-district music festival will be in the high school's auditorium. March tenth and eleventh will be the honor society inductions for Spanish, Italian, French art, and national honor society. I will be there representing the Spanish Honor Society as the treasurer of the club. The juniors will have NJGPA testing the week of March eleventh through fourteenth. Finally, the class of twenty twenty-six should be on the lookout for information on next year's senior photos. Now, before I go, I would like to acknowledge the achievements of students from this past month. The debate team won the best team overall award at the January twenty twenty-five debate competition at the Scattaway Magnet School. A special congratulations to the following students for winning awards for outstanding individual performances at the debate competition. Riley Billion receives the best constructive award. Erin Everett received the best constructive award. Garry Shie received the best cross-examiner award, and Zoe Cabrera received the best rebuttalist award. The Model UN team competed at a prestigious conference at the University of Chicago. Ray Pascal earned first place, Alvin Nugent and Leana O'Neil earned second place, and Riley Billion earned third place. In April, they will compete at a Rutgers Model Congress representing the state of Louisiana. Congratulations to our senior athletes for their most recent college signing day. Girls' basketball, Stella Sweeney received her one thousandth point, and the team just lost a close game to the second seed in the GMCs. The boys' basketball is currently in the GMC tournament. The swim team has GMCs coming up. Wrestling placed third in the GMC tournament and just made sectional finals. Track and field won both girls' and boys' division titles. And lastly, congratulations to Cameron and Molly Van Wick, who both auditioned for All-State Band and were selected. And because this might be my last speech, I want to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Foscolo for giving me the opportunity to speak at the meetings and share my viewpoint on student life here at SPHS. Thank you.
That might be your last official time speaking at the board, but you're always welcome to come back. Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Thank you. Any board member comments on presentations? Bill?
Thank you. Yeah, great job by the students with their student presentations, what they're bringing to the elementary schools in cooperation with the high school students, the elementary students, and the presentations on the Black History Month poetry and artwork is just wonderful to see every year, and it's nice to see the talents of our students. I'd like to congratulate Kat on another information we'll record from the activities of the high school. Like Dr. Tansey said, you're always welcome here Wednesday nights once a month. And a great job by Alex and the business office staff as well as all the administration involved in the financial deal for the district to get an audit report with no recommendations as to be committed. So thank you and keep it up.
Anybody else? Mr. Chapman?
I would duplicate what Bill said to Alex. Great job, and Marad, and the whole business office, and Dr. Tansey. To get no findings and no recommendations is the way it is now in South Plainfield. So it's a lot of pressure every year, right? But this is, I don't know how many years in a row this is now. It's like nine or 10 years in a row with no findings. Far cry from the first year I got on the board when I had yours twelve that year. So, you know, great job. Thank you. I appreciate the job that you guys are doing there. Kat, great job again. I don't know what you're planning on in majoring in college, but I think communications will certainly be a consideration for you. Time after time, you've come up here and you sat there and so eloquently enunciated everything that you needed to say, and you did a great job, and we're going to miss you. Good luck in college, and congratulations also on being on the All-State for the Conference here. Very proud of you. Great job.
Anybody else? Aaron?
Yeah, just want to kind of, kind of say whatever the other people want to say. Kat, wonderful job giving us the update. You always enjoy hearing from the students. You give us a good perspective about what's going on in the high school. We truly appreciate it. Thank you. Alex, congratulations to you, Marad, and the accounting office again on a perfect audit. We really appreciate your hard work and that of your team as well. Thank you to the high school students for updating us on what they're going to be doing Read Across America and the little press they have for the elementary students. I think it's really important that our high school students get involved with our younger students. And to the middle school, the meaning of the poems, the students did a great job, and our artwork was just magnificent. So again, it just goes to show the talent that we have among our students in this district along with, you know, some of the other ones that Kat's telling us about as far as our debate team and the Model UN and our athletes. Everybody was doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
Anybody else? Diva?
Kat, amazing job. The sky's the limit for you. Continue to be a rock star in all aspects of your life for every obstacle, every success, everything that you face, continue to knock it out the ballpark every single time. Alex, great job to you in the business office for clean audit report. That's what we like to see. Just the presentations that we had, Read Across America Day, it's amazing for our high schoolers' support to our elementary school students. I remember doing Read Across America Day as a student here, and it's truly one of the best days when you get to see the younger students, and you're like, I was one of them one day. So that's always awesome. To the middle school students that came here and read poems to us, and the literary piece is one thing, but also seeing the artistic work next to it is even more so amazing, because now they're analyzing what it is that they're taking and the information that they read about, and now they're putting it to work. They're making the art come, they're making the words come to life through their artwork. And great job to all the students, the athletes, the debate team, Model UN, everything. It's amazing, the report that Kat gave, that all of our students are doing amazing work. Great job to the teachers and everyone supporting them as well.
Anybody else? Kat, great job. You know, where you want to school?
I don't know yet.
You don't know yet, huh? All right, all right. Well, I can tell you, you know, you're going to be a senior in anything you do. I know, I've heard stories about you here, you've been a better person and mentor to the students that are knowing you personally, you're hardworking, you feel like it too. So kudos to you.
Thank you.
Okay, best of luck. Ms. Murray? Ms. Perici, great job, had students presenting to us. Thank you for having us, having them come to us and presenting. Ms. Murray, Ms. Bracy, great job. Had students present, presenting to us. Thank you for having us, having them come to us and presenting. It was, it was really appreciated. Um, and Alex, we know that Marad does everything, so stop taking it very forward. He used to bring his behind-the-outfit.
Absolutely.
Your face, apparently. Nice job. Nice job. All right, moving on. Uh, agenda deletions that we've got under curriculum, uh, F will be removed, uh, for further discussion. And let's see what else we've got here. Any public comments on agenda items only? Seeing none? Let's go. Resolution to approve prior board minutes. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Aspam?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Feather?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes. Do our curriculums, student activities?
Unloved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Aspam?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Feather?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes. Bottom seat.
Second.
Any discussion? Nothing? Apologize? Anything? Here we go. Personnel, we're gonna go, what have you got here? A through E.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir?
Uh, I just, I just want to, um, uh, wish the best of luck to, you know, all the, uh, all the people who are in the, the district, but specifically to, uh, Coach Viola. Um, she's moving on to heading into a different career path. And, uh, she was a great, uh, great coach and mentor to the girls in the sports that she coached. Uh, she's a role model of a coach, uh, in this, in this school district, and I really appreciate everything she did. I appreciate all of us.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Boat?
Uh, yes, I'm staying on twelve E, as I am conflicted with my wife's spouse's work in the district.
Mr. Aspam?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Feather?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes. Finance?
Unloved.
Second. Clear call.
All the way where we got our A through, please. X? No discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Aspam?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Feather?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
I'm staying on ENF. Everything else is yes. We have any public comments? On any matter? Seeing none. Any board member comments? Yes, sir?
Uh, I had a conversation, uh, last month with one of our two thousand and twenty-four graduates and, uh, like our, we have a young man also this year, but both of them made the decision to join Marine Corps. So, Marad, very good. Love to see that. They're, uh, pursuing something that'll help us out, help themselves out. It's nice to see that we had that opportunity.
Anybody else? All right. Seeing none, uh, we will go into executive session, uh, pertaining to student matter, if I understand. Is that correct? And action will be taken.
Student matter, personnel, legal aid.
We got a few things going on. All right. Action will be taken. We'll get back. Put in for your half hour. Forty-five? All right. On my favor? On my favor? Let's go. Will you open the gate, please?
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Aspam?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi? Mr. Cecilberg?
Here.
Mr. Cassio?
Here.
All right, I got two, uh, resolutions that we have to put on the agenda. One is to, uh, reinstate curriculum and student activities F. And then I'm gonna read another resolution. We can just move to all this morning. So this will be curriculum and student activities H. Whereas a residency hearing was held this evening in executive session for student IDs two zero two one zero three nine zero and two zero two five two five two seven, which the parent did not intend to spake in surprise of her right to do so. And whereas based on the results of the hearing, the board finds that the students are not domiciled in South Plainfield and are not entitled to attend school in the district, now be resolved that the board hereby disenrolls the above-recorded students and assesses tuition for the period that students ineligible attendance during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and directs the superintendent to notify the family of the decision and their appeal rate. Those two resolutions, so F and then H. Any motion?
Unloved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Aspam?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Feather?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Uh, we have to, don't we have to approve that? We just added in the risk.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, I just moved it to approve it.
Oh, you moved it to approve it.
Yeah.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.